Okay, well it's 6 o'clock, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. We'll start with our pledge, and if we ask Commissioner Davis to do our invocation tonight, please.
Just roll with you. Get up, kid.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we come to you tonight, thank you for all the many blessings you've given us. We ask you, Lord, that as we go through this meeting, that you give us the wisdom and the understanding to run our city the right way. We ask that you help us with these decisions, help guide us in our faithfulness to this city, and we ask that you be with us, and always say and do, before we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
This thing goes really fast.
It just took off.
Welcome everybody out tonight. Okay, first item is the approval of minutes.
Make the motion to approve the minutes.
Second. We have a motion and second, any further discussion? Those in favor signify with aye. Post same. Motion passes. Next item would be the bills.
Make the motion, pay bills.
Second. We have a motion and second on the bills, pay the bills, any further discussion? Those in favor signify with aye. Post same. Motion passes. I want to add something to the old business, and that's the Beverden build supply bill for the final of the City Hall renovations.
Well, you listed you under new business.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's on new business.
I'm sorry.
I got in the wrong hearing again.
Okay, well that's what was thrown in. We'll worry about that when we get in there to new business then. First item of new business then is approve the first reading of the 2018 tax rate. You've got your paperwork in front of you. Our current rate's .265, compensating is on here, and then of course, with the regular increase or recommendations of a .261, which is still a drop in the rate, and that would be a drop in the tax rate for the third year in a row.
Where are you getting .265?
At the bottom.
I'll bet you it's at that one. I'm sorry.
Have they revaluated enough property to make a .251 be compensated?
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
Now, the personal is set, not by us, right? I mean, I know we set it, but it's a formula to get to the personal, isn't that correct? That's what, so we don't, we can't fluctuate it, it's beyond our, we just have to approve it.
Well, I move we lower the tax rate for the third year in a row, and set it at the 0.261.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Those in favor signify with aye. Post same. Motion passes. That was easy enough. Okay, now, the final payment for builder supply on the City Hall. Larry, there's just two things I found on here that I don't think was covered. One of them was, and I think we can approve this once even, and let you work this, the details out on it, but there was a, windows, there was a mix-up on the windows, and I've got that covered, but the windows were by the, there was going by the both office doors to the mayor's office, they were deducted out, but there's been no credit back for that. And then there was supposed to be, and this one may have been done, and Mike's not in, Chris is in here, and Larry, you play on too. Did they put a new locking mechanism on the door coming into the police station?
No, we actually took the lock out.
Okay.
That way it's open and the other.
Well, that's what I thought, but it was in one of the addendums that that was to be included in there, so there should be a credit for the, that locking mechanism. That's the only two items that I found that away. Now, as far as completion, of course, the completion date for the overall project was supposed to have been June 15th, and I believe that I actually finished it on August 13th, because that was our city commission date last month, because I remember we talked about they finished something that day, had we known, we could have got it all, which is 59 days. And the contract called for the liquidated damages of $250 per day, so there'd be a total of $14,750 in damages if we choose to. Now, at the same time, the Phase 1 completion date was supposed to have been March 15th. That's this out here, this room out here, and they were still working on the walls the week of, I know, that first week in August. Now, you're looking at about 151 days on that, if you want to get that particular, which is $37,750. I think that's personally a bit excessive, because we did use the facility when we moved out here. Things weren't done like they should have been, we should have had our temporary city of occupancy and done it right, but it just didn't work out. But there is, the overall project was supposed to have been done on June 15th. So what's your pleasure?
How much do we still owe them? Because we paid some, but we didn't pay them all?
Well, how much did we pay them last, did we vote to pay them in May?
Was it 20?
I mean, in August.
The bill was $35,000, something, paid 20 or 25.
It says a balance, it was on that one bill I got, was $23,656, but was that before?
We didn't have anything in the minutes last month.
Okay, so we didn't pay any of it?
There wasn't any.
Okay, that might have been the month before, we just didn't, okay. So it's $23,656.92.
Without the two credits.
Without the two credits coming back.
And do you know what the amount of the credits are?
No, that's something they'll have to tell us, because it was, well, it was over part of their bid. They're not going to be a lot, I'm guessing the windows may be, maybe 300 bucks. The lock may be as much, I don't know, because I don't know how expensive those locks are. I know we had awful trouble keeping one working. It never did work, really.
Mm-hmm.
So my guess, you're still talking about a total balance due of around 23,000, plus or minus some change.
So on this overall completion, you said it was August the 13th?
That was the last day they did work in here.
Was it in this room?
I think they finished it.
The whole project.
It was the whole project, but I think it was in.
But one particular area or none?
Doesn't matter which area really, because the overall completion date was that date.
Right, right, I understand.
Because I don't think we need to go this route.
No.
About the 151 days thing?
Yeah.
That was a little excessive. Have they done work for us before though like this? I mean, they've never had any.
59.
I'm trying to remember our conversation, I think that was in.
What would that equal out to, or what they said?
I'm sorry?
How would that equal out to?
It's, that was the completion date, contract completion date, that was actual, it's 59 days, a 254 day.
Maybe if you sunk it, maybe half of that.
That was like a 10.
I don't know.
10, 10 times 10, 10 days, right? Look at 10 days, fucking thousand.
1,000.
Okay. Okay, that'd be a break of what we had, so.
What were you thinking about?
You know, if we can do that full amount, we can do a partial amount.
Because.
But it did drag out, because there was a lot of times when nothing was going on.
Yeah.
Especially early on.
I mean, I had to do it, we did it over here. We don't, we're on 6-11. Yeah, and we did it over here.
Oh, yeah.
And we did take a, we took some off of that one too, didn't we?
I think so.
Yeah, and we didn't charge him as much to be true.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I'm glad he did that, wow. Um, like you say, I don't think we can have, not be one if we don't be the other. Larry, do you know how much we deducted from that one? When we did that one?
Around $10,000.
It was 10, I think it was 10 even.
That's what we deducted, or that's what we charged them?
That was the liquidated damages on it.
Yes, sir.
Actually, it was actually higher than that.
So should we just make this one 10 too?
Is that a form of a motion? Do I?
It's more than the nine, how much, would it be 9,000? No, the damages would be 9,000, right? 14.
14, 14, 7.
There's 9,000 difference between what we owe them and the damage.
He was the one who, another.
Oh, yeah, 23 and the 14, okay.
So are you making that form of a motion?
I was just asking a question, I mean, no offense, I was just asking.
No, I'm.
And I agree, I think we ought to charge them something, because if we don't, like you say, we're gonna catch it over here from that one, and I don't blame him at all. If we charge him and we don't charge this one, we're gonna be in trouble. I'm just trying to be, what's fair? I didn't, that's why I want to know how much, because that, that was a local guy too, wasn't it?
Yeah.
That did this, we charged 10, so.
Seems like it was around 15 or 16, and we charged him 10, which would have been about two thirds of what we could have.
So that's what I was sort of thinking of, because I was kind of.
So you're thinking 9 instead of 10? Charging 9 instead of 10? Because wouldn't two thirds of that be about 9,000?
9,833. 14, I just took 14, 750, and divided it by 3, it comes to 49, 17.
Times 2.
Yeah.
I prefer the round, one way or the other.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't, whichever way you want to go, but.
So do you want to do 10? I mean, that could be the fairer, I mean, I'll make it a motion if you think that's the right number.
I mean, you gotta just pick a number, I mean.
It either gotta be 9 or 10, it's gonna be one or the other, so.
Well, there is a break on it because of the, from the 14, 750.
Yeah.
And like I said, and this is nothing we haven't shared with, with the contractor, there was a lot of days nothing was done.
Yeah, because I was standing one day, and they wouldn't do their darn thing.
So as you say, round it one way or the other, so if it's 9,800, then, how far should we round?
Well, I said, I just threw 10 out there because they said that one was 10. Do I make a motion when we charge them to 10,000? Or, what would you call it? It's not a fine.
Liquidated damages is what's going.
Liquidated damages is 10,000. And I hate to do it, but it's only fair.
Do you have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and second, any further discussion? Those in favor signify with aye. Post same. Motion passes.
And again, I hate it, because I don't know how you cannot do it, because that was, I know that one too, and I'd hate it to do it 10, but we had to do it. I just had forgotten how much it was.
Mister Comments will start. Nancy?
Do you want me to do an update on?
Let's come back to you, if you don't mind. Chris?
Yep.
Place or fire?
Yep, we're good.
Leva? You have anything?
No.
Destin?
Yeah.
All right. Keith?
Yep, everything's peaceful.
Sandy?
I think everything's been pretty peaceful too.
Chris? That as well, we're good.
I talked to Larry about one little problem, and I think we're gonna get that aired out, so I'm good.
Larry?
I guess everybody noticed some headphone calls on the water tire being cleaned and painted, and the water spraying all the ocean around, and Mulberry and Bridge Crescent, and Sixth Street, and East Ninth and Main. They're hoping to have a tank, sandblasted paint by the middle this week, and hopefully the tank to be filling next week with a backtea sample following the day after, and then back to normal hopefully Monday of next.
Is that trying to keep the pressure up out of what you're doing?
Trying to keep the pressure down, we're gonna have a line all over town like we had the last few times. So we know where water bill is going to be a whole lot higher this month from the county water district, but.
Better than the busted out.
We're not paying overtime, and still having the water from county, so.
Well, it's good to know people do notice and question, because my phone was blowing up, and I'm like, I'm on vacation.
Normally I would have advised everybody, but they called me kind of short notice, and said, hey, we're in your area, you're on our schedule, so it happened really quick, and I failed to call, so I do apologize for the inconvenience. That's all that.
Okay, Nancy, let's talk about planning and zoning. Nancy and I have been talking a bit about an entity that's looking here in town right now on an issue, trying to get it worked out, but she's brought our attention, and we've talked about it some time at the couple of meetings I've been to with planning and zoning, and I know Tara and I have discussed a little bit, Deanie and I had, I haven't with George obviously since he's been in, but before, that it's been, how long since our plan, and not, not the comprehensive, but the planning and zoning has been in since.
1991.
And nothing has really been changed on it since that time.
That's a long time.
And there are a lot of things that have changed in society, if nothing else. I was, Nancy and I were talking earlier, and I think Charles was in there. The big thing, you go to a lot of these meetings and new stuff, they're all talking about getting back to mixed use, like the old downtowns used to be. And they said, what's wrong with having a neighborhood grocery store, like on the corner, like, you know, and that's the kind of stuff, but right now, we couldn't do it here in a lot of places. Nancy has been talking with Grad about getting some help, and I'll let you tell a little more, you know more about it than I do, but.
I can start out with probably getting, the lady that I've been working with is Jennifer Marks, and she does the plant, works with planning and zoning. She has asked over plant over at Grad how much it would cost probably for us to get the things done that we need to get done. The ordinance is so outdated, and just like I was telling you today about a case where a person wants to put a home, like say apartment, behind his business attached, whereas our ordinance says it has to be above, just like downtown. So the zoning is what's making a difference with that. And then on another section I can read, and it says you can have, you know, the owner can have an apartment, and it didn't say above.
There's conflicting.
So I can go it either way, and that's not right, it should be one way or the other. You can get it that way. So much of it is, I have to make a decision, or I have to tell you all that I'm gonna do it a certain way, but if it were changed, we could take care of that quite a bit, because Grad would go over every chapter with me, and we'd work it out and stuff. By law right now, we're behind on signage, because we haven't been able to get that updated. That should have been done already, that would be the first thing that I would ask them to help me with. Then the comprehensive plan, it's time for that to be updated again, but it's so, so far behind that the whole thing needs to be redone. So I asked them about the comprehensive plan, the ordinance, and rezoning, and remapping the cities, Hartford, Newbury Hills cities. This is for both Hartford and Newbury Hills, because Hartford also wanted this done. I talked with AB, and I talked with Tara, and they both seem to think that both cities are willing to do this. Well, and I did finally get Jennifer to tell me what her boss had thought, that redoing every bit of it would possibly be between 20 and 30,000. So I had talked with Paul today, and whenever I was going over a lot of it, I could see that the comprehensive plan, it's for the whole county as well as both cities. I have to make sure that it gets updated, and all we've ever been able to do is pay about $3,000, each city paid 15 or so, just to get a revision, where they would change the math.
But we're beyond revisions, really, now.
Yeah, yeah.
And the county, by the way, is required by statute to have this comprehensive plan, and we've been paying for it.
And have it also as far as what they're, what they need in the systems, and how much they've improved, how much, many more businesses have opened, and any kind of industry that's changed, and any kind of roadworks that's changed, it has to be in there with the county. It's not just planning and zoning, but it's planning and zoning's responsibility to see that all of it's included. And I just read that in KRS. So what can, I was asking, why can't we get this county to pay for the comprehensive plan? They've never had to pay anything. I've just had to give them copies of it after we got it done. I don't know how to go about that, but my request was that I talk, next week, I'll be at a CAMP meeting, that's a Kentucky Association of Mediation Managers, is what it is, and Jennifer will be there also, so we've decided that we'll send our afternoon talking about this, and seeing what can be done, and what she feels like, that we can go ahead and start on if you all approve things. So my question is, do you want me to see if she can help me do something to get the county to pay on it? How to request?
Sure.
What to ask for? If we do it in a grant, you know, ask for some kind of grant help, or something like that, because they do a lot of grants over there. I think that's would be the first thing to really try to push, is to get the county to pay for the ordinance, funding for the comprehensive plan, and then that'll cut our part way down, because it's together.
How much is the comprehensive plan, and how much is this redoing our ordinances?
That's, she just gave me the total amount.
Total amount.
And that's what she's gonna meet with her about next week, to try to get a kind of a handle.
So I don't know, of course, if they had allotted to the comprehensive plan. I'll find out.
Yeah.
Before we go any farther, but that's what I wanted to know. Do you want me to try to do something like that?
Well, I don't think there's any doubt.
If you don't try, we'll never get it.
Yeah.
You need to try.
Place to start, obviously, would be with the judge.
I don't know if anybody's ever requested that before.
Well, I'll be honest with you, I didn't know the county was the one who was required to have it.
Well, I always give you all, you have to prove it.
Right, the update.
The county has to take it after the city, you know, cities approve it, and so they have to have a copy of it, it's part of.
But I was always under the impression it was for the planning and zoning area, so which would be the city of Beverden and the city of Hartford. But when you're talking about it has to be for the whole county, that's the difference.
Yeah, all of the stacks for the county's there as well, and what, and all of the future plans as to what you want to upgrade to, what your areas you might be wanting to make into a green space, you know, how much area you want a percentage of with this type of a project, us multi-family homes or industrial, or, you know, percentages that they work out and help you with on the growth. So it is planning, but I don't know why they can't pay it. They use it a lot easier on us.
Quite least a portion of it, since it is for the county's benefit.
Yeah, I mean, the comprehensive plan part, if I can find out if they pay a part of it. But I'll just have you all tell me what you think there, because that ordinance is, we'll go back to that, that's gonna take a long time, but they do all the advertisement and everything as well, rezonations and stuff included in that cost. It would be the newspaper notices, the public hearings for every meetings. They would also handle that, and I'd work with them to get it set up for a meeting, get it in the papers. So that includes all that type of thing as well.
And this, we get some things covered that were, actually, it's kind of in there incorrectly now anyway, isn't it? Like the downtown?
Yeah, the downtown area, a B1, you know, it needs to be a B1, it's a B3. A B1, you can be right beside each other, you don't have spaces that you have to be apart from another business or anything, and you can have your apartments upstairs, and it's, it's a B3, which is more so with car lots and things like that, but nothing ever changed where it was put down to a B1, but it's absolutely a B1. It's not a B3. So you would figure out how much of a percentage you want as a B1, and then when you want to cut it off and go over to a B2 or B3. It's never, that's never been done that way. Our maps don't show it at all.
Well, even some of the areas that have been annexed, didn't it, if I'm not mistaken, did some of it, even though it's businesses, come in as residential because of the way the annexation was written up?
When it was done, my understanding, because I did ask it one of these care, you know, one of these meetings I go to, and they said mainly because they didn't really come in here, just like with the floodplain. They didn't really come in here at once, and I had gotten a lot of people to go to this meeting, tell them what they wanted, I had the cities, and I had the county, I notified them all that they were coming in, and they stood there, and they said, well, yeah, we can see that, because I had their cities and county and all like that, Mark Offroad that were getting flooded, and different things like that. They didn't, they took all of that information, I worked like crazy on, and then they didn't do any of it. You know, this downtown right just stayed in.
Oh, yeah, I know.
That was definitely marked. So it didn't make any difference, even though you tried it.
Well, all your new annexation has to come in as a R1, then better be rezoned.
Yeah, well, you know.
Well, but the issue of it is, if there's a, like when Wendy's, how can you bring it in as a?
You have to bring in R1, then change it.
The floodplain taken care of too, which we're going in with that, and see that most all of that reviewed, because it hasn't been.
Mm-hmm.
Now, the rezoning, you just have to figure out where you want it. They told me that what happened, it was just like the floodplain, if it was a creek or tributary, or it was an elevation they knew was lower, they didn't come and look at it, they looked at maps, and they marked them.
In the map of what?
They said it's just like taking a marker, just like taking a marker and just going down that stream so far. They said that's how we had to get started, so that's the way it was done. That's the way your zoning ended up, it's what was there, they went ahead and took it, and when it jumped over to something else, they went ahead and marked it something else. Whenever it was business, all along 231, they marked it all the same. So that's how it's all wrong that way, because they can come here and do it. I can understand that, how could they do, why could they do that? It's out of date totally. But you, now you know why it did that, it was a majority.
Well, I think if you go next week and get your information together, then we can go to the fiscal court and make a request, so as soon as you get all that done, then we can have a better plan to go forward.
Yeah, but you all want me to then talk with her about seeing about getting something brought up?
Yeah, yeah.
Well.
You don't ask, won't ever get it, so we need to make plans.
Well, the fiscal court, and I know some of them do, some of them don't realize that the residents of Beverden and Hartford pay county taxes every year.
That's what I see it, that's what I saw.
And get very little in return for it. The judge has been most helpful, and our magistrate's been helpful to us, and I'm sure Hartford would say the same thing about their magistrate.
Well, that's what I'll do then, I'll be talking with her all next week. And do you want anything else brought up? Well, I'll meet up with her next week, because at some point, she and I are gonna talk about dates to get both mayors, to get both attorneys, any of the boards up my two, and just have a meeting with her. So if you tell me now what you think you want other than what we're doing, then I'll have her research that, and when we do meet, she can give you answers on it.
What else is there? I thought what we were looking at was pretty comprehensive all the way around with the.
Right now, but I mean, as far as the ordinance and the zoning and the maps, because we'll go ahead and talk to her about that, or not, you know.
That's a good place to start, the whole six things.
What some of this is.
Sorry? Those three things are a pretty good place to start.
And I'm sure her comments is gonna pull more questions from us.
Yeah, yeah, but she just said what I asked you all now, and then she would be having time to look it up, maybe research some specific things, and I told her I would, but I feel like you would want more than what we're doing. So I'll take anybody's suggestions. You know, we've got you.
I'll be honest with you, I don't know what kind of questions to ask her.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, this is something, we've gone by this ordinance we've had for this, this long, and I know there are issues with it that need to be cleaned up, and we just wanted to jump in and clean them up.
After you meet with her, we might have some questions then.
Yeah.
And after she, we meet with her, that's when I'm thinking they're really gonna come around.
Well, I thought you might have specifics as to wanting to know how they come up with their numbers, what all they will do for their numbers, such as the money, just.
Oh, well, that's an automatic, I thought you meant about the.
Well, I mean, specifics.
Orness changes itself.
Think of. I would know how to maybe ask some of the questions about that, and you might tell me. Anything specific to ask her for that, I mean, what you, I can do my best.
I think we would need a breakout on what's the comprehensive plan, and then what is the, the maps, and then what is the ordinances? And I know it may not be exact, but.
Give a general idea.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'll do that.
So, we can plan accordingly, and then...
Yep, and any, nobody has any specific dates in mind, do they? She just said, well, somebody might say that they know when they can meet and when they can't, and I said, I'll find out.
Well, are you all going to be at fall break? You know, you're going to be gone fall break. Sandy won't be about fall break for some reason. So, I think you would not want to do it.
She's got a baby to go see.
She's going to go see the new baby. Say you wouldn't want to do it that week.
Well, and again, sometime in October.
Probably won't wait until fall break.
I'll be out next week, see if that meeting's though.
Well, we'll be gone too, KLC's next week.
Well, you get in October, after the fall break at school, you can have that second, after the second, second week later. Because I think fall break the first full week, isn't it?
The week of the 8 through the 12, I think it's fall break.
Yeah.
I like the 22nd, sounds real good.
So, you're saying...
Going back to the 20.
When it's fall break, you know, you don't want that happening.
The 8.
It starts the 8, Monday the 8.
Yep.
Monday the 8 through that week.
So, it's the second full week.
Yeah.
So, you'll be back when?
The 20th, on Saturday.
So, if we wait the week of the 22nd, is that getting too far out?
I may hurt the calendar be open.
At her calendar, maybe, yes.
Yeah, maybe more open, her calendar may be more open that week.
No, that is too far out, because also, we'll go back and talk with Hartford as well. So, it's not too far.
My birthday's on the 24th, so we could meet and celebrate.
But it's a Wednesday, so we don't want to celebrate.
Yours is on 17, so...
I won't be here, though. Mine's a lot bigger than yours.
If you can get with Hartford and see if we can set something up in sometime, anytime after the 22nd.
This one is. This one's a spacy one.
All right. I can do that, you prefer to air or not. She'll do it either.
If we're supposed to be there, it'd have to be late for me.
Or late afternoon, something like that, 5 o'clock or so.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. I get off work at 4:00.
Yeah, because she said that she could do either one, if she had plenty of time, I can.
But if it's better for everyone else at a different time, that's...
Try something around 5 or 6, 5?
5ish.
Okay. I'm done, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that's all I have.
Have a closed session? Larry doesn't have anything for...
Really?
We're finished?
That's quick.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
How'd that go, Mary?
It's good.